Involving Dwayne Nava's candidacy or his run for city council. I'd say that was a really highly likely event that happened. Mr. Nava originally said that he would run for District Three, but then he was switched over to at-large because the Democratic Party thought that a better choice for District Three would be Sarah Martinez. So, the campaign goes on, all debates are over with, and all the ballots are printed. We have the military ballots already mailed and out, and the chamber says that they're giving this position to Dwayne Nava Wednesday evening. Ballots go out this morning. They went out this morning. They had to go out this morning. So, of course, Nava is still on the ballot. Now, we can say all we want to the public that he's withdrawn, but he will get some votes. So, this is manipulating the election in a big, big way. I think that that's about all I really have to say to kind of go into some discussion from here, but I really think that all the timing was perfect to pull just before all the ballots were mailed. If this discussion was going on at the chamber, which is highly likely it was, and again, they had these three top candidates for months, I think it would have been likely that Nava was the most favorite candidate among those chamber board members. And I have to remember that Nick Gradishar is on the board, the chamber board, and so is Dwayne Nava. So, both of those people sit on the chamber board. So, I think knowing that those three candidates were the top candidates, they could have appointed Dwayne way before the ballots were printed, and that discussion would have been had way before he announced his candidacy. So, I think there's some manipulation of the votes going on here, for sure. I think there was polling done, and this decision was part of the Democratic's stance from the very beginning.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we get into any discussion, City Attorney Kudosek, could you give us your synopsis of that split?
You know, you asked that the county clerk could tell him, and it may be appropriate for Mr. Ortiz to say, "This is how the election will proceed," assuming that Mr. Nava files a withdrawal from the race. I don't know, Mr. Ortiz, if you're willing to do that. If not, I'm happy to do it, but you're the election official.
Thank you.
This might turn...
Yes.
Hello, Ms. Mitchell. Thank you for coming.
Excuse me, though. This is the county attorney or your personal attorney?
My county attorney.
Okay, thanks. Sarah.
Yeah, I'm here, and I'm an official. So, I don't know where to start. You know, I found out about it on Wednesday also, and at that point, I knew that we were, you know, far past any deadline that we could have taken the name off the ballot. You have to remember that the system has to be programmed. We have to have logic and accuracy tests beforehand, and those are all states set by Colorado law statutes. So, it put us in an awkward position, but this is definitely not the first time this has happened. This happens pretty much in every election where somebody, something happens in their family and they don't think they can do the job, and so they withdraw. And even in the presidential election, the presidential primary in 2020, we had a number of candidates on the board withdrawn on the ballots. So, you know, once we go to print at the state level or at the county level, we've already tested the system, and the systems board has been programmed to be able to handle the names that were on the ballots at that point. And so, it's, you know, it would be impossible for us to, where we are at this moment, even on Wednesday, before we have met the ballots, to go back and take those names off. Now, we do have mitigating things that we do. You know, first, what we're going to do is we're going to make sure that every voter's service informed at every spot where they can vote. We're going to have papers that are saying that Dwayne Nava is a good candidate. We're also going to do a press release with all of the local press, put them on our Facebook page, our Twitter page, and our website saying that Dwayne has withdrawn. And then, we don't count Dwayne's votes. If there's a vote for Dwayne, it shows up as an undervote. So, he can't, you know, his name will not be on the summary of votes at any election. So, I mean, that's basically what we could do at this point in the election for you guys to make sure that, you know, his votes are cast. Now, there's, like you said before, there's going to be a lot of people that vote for Dwayne, and those people are disenfranchised because their votes won't count if they're under.
Excuse me. That if? I'm sorry? You done?
Yeah, let's pronounce it. I've already answered the questions.
Does anybody have any questions or comments for Mr. Ortiz answering mine?
So, what percentage of the votes are mailed in votes? Because none of those mailed votes could be notified. What percentage?
You know, it's hard to say, but usually, in-person voting is around two percent.
Thank you.
Are you ready? No, we're just going to... Mr. Kudosek, do you have anything to add?
I had the pleasure of representing Mr. Ortiz when I was county attorney, and I just want to speak for his ethics and his ability. The city asked the county to conduct this election on our behalf. We have done that going back decades, frankly, because we don't have the ability to independently run a general municipal election. So, we enter into a contract. We, of course, will pay for the county clerk's services to run our election, but the designated election official is Mr. Ortiz. So, just all decisions regarding this election are going to be made by the county clerk. I have reviewed the law, and what Mr. Ortiz has said is accurate. That's exactly the way to handle it. So, it's, you know, it's an unfortunate situation when a candidate withdraws, but the law says when that happens, this is how you handle it, and that is how this election will be handled.
Thank you. You made a point earlier that said that a withdrawal has to be submitted, has a withdrawal to submit?
I have not... There is a document that Mr. Nava should sign, and I request that he sign. I have not seen that.
And the ramifications that it's not signed?
Well, then, there's ambiguity as to whether he is withdrawing. Mr. Nava has a great reputation. He's been, you know, an upstanding citizen. He would have made a great city councillor. He's decided to work for the Pueblo Chamber. If he says he's withdrawing, I'm sure he can come in to the city clerk's office and sign a withdrawal document. I haven't seen that. I don't think he's signed that yet.
Listen.
Okay, when I spoke with Mr. Nava, I was not yet sure if there was a document that he had supplied, that the official withdrawal date would have expired, and I wasn't sure that he would be able to officially withdraw. And so, I told him that I would quickly transfer the order on through a document that he didn't provide. He did, but he didn't have the time to sign that document.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Flores?
Dan, is there any reason why Dwayne could not withdraw? And isn't it his right to withdraw if he wants to?
Yeah, it's his absolute right to withdraw. He can withdraw on election day. We, in our calendar, the city clerk's election calendar, say, we have a date when we say, "If you're going to withdraw, withdraw by this date," so that your name will not go on the ballot. Unfortunately, in this case, the withdrawal has come after that date. So, Mr. Nava's name is going to be on the ballot. But I'm sure when that day came, Mr. Nava did not know he was going to withdraw. He thought he would run in good faith. So, the circumstances changed. He's now decided no longer to be a candidate.
The other thing is that we do provide money to the chamber, but we... Would you confirm that this body has no business interfering in their business? That they have their own autonomy, they're a nonprofit organization, they make decisions that they do their boards? And could you reiterate what I just said and confirm to me, we have no ability to interest City Charter any of this way, other than the money that we give them to steward and in the operation of the chamber? Could you elaborate on that?
Yeah, the city's only role in connection with the Pueblo Chamber of Commerce is to make sure that they comply with their contracts, and they have. That's the end of it. We... There are contractors, the city has hundreds of contractors. They have performed according to the contract. End of story. We can't tell them how to run their organization.
When it comes to, when it comes to any kind of policy that they have, it doesn't appear that... You know, when I came here, I'm wondering why we're leaving at all, number one. We have no authority or no ability to tell the chamber what they should do and they shouldn't do, and it's just somebody needs to explain to me, you know, why they think that this is some mysterious kind of approach on an election, when in fact, you now have three people that have a better chance of winning if one is eliminated statistically. You know, there's a guarantee that two of us now are going to be guaranteed a position, whereas before, with one loser, now the odds are better, in my opinion.
That was my point exactly. So, I do have a question. So, Dan, I mean, I'm sure you're correct as far as Colorado law, but the only thing I could find out in Colorado law with elections is with the debt, it describes what you described. But what I read was, once the ballots were printed and mailed, he could not withdraw.
No, that's not accurate.
Okay.
That's not accurate. A person can withdraw on election day. They can say after election day, "You know, I've been elected. I am the designated elected official, and I no longer want to assume office." Once they are sworn in, then they can resign. So, the councillor-elect, even if he wins, he can withdraw after.
So, again, that's kind of my point. If this wasn't a strategy, and Mr. Nava did win, he could resign and we could replace him. If he lost, who cares? We announce the new manager of the chamber. So, that's why it really looks like strategy. That's why it looks as妙似that.
My brother-in-law was a politician and a salesman. I'm just a lawyer. You know, this political strategy is just beyond my expertise.
I'm sure you have the sense of Wally stealing.
Oh, I have. I, you know, I love Wally.
I know you do.
But he's passed away. His brother's passed away.
Right.
That's all past tense. I know that. I have no role to play in any of that.
I didn't say you do. I just said you knew there were lots of strategies. Wally designed most of them. But go ahead.
Mr. Ortiz? I have the law pulled up if you'd like to hear it.
Yes, sure.
It's 1-4-1001, withdrawal or disqualification candidacy. Any person who has accepted designation or nomination may withdraw from candidacy at any time by signing a letter of control. And that's Title I, so that's what we're running this election on, but there are also municipal laws in Title 31, and it's basically the same. Any person who has been nominated and who has accepted nomination might cause this or, I mean, to be withdrawn from such a nomination.
Yeah, I mean, I think everybody understands that. You know, I don't think that the... How I understood when Councilwoman Horace called this meeting wasn't to change what the Chamber of Commerce... This has nothing to do with the Chamber of Commerce or Mr. Nava's appointment. As a matter of fact, I mean, congratulations to Mr. Nava on his appointment. That's a wonderful position, and I don't blame him one bit for taking that position. But the bigger question, and what was, what I feel should be questioned, is that the emails that I sent yesterday to yourself and Mr. Kudosek is that it was my understanding, according to the municipal code, that the name had to be stricken from the ballot. So, what became very apparent to me when you eloquently sent back a response that was completely understandable, and I agree with, but the fact is that with that name still on the ballot, you hit it right on the head. We're disenfranchising voters. So, whether Mr. Nava gets one vote or 10,000 votes, those 10,000 votes are no void and not good. So, we live in a society now where the whole movement has been to include voters and more people to vote. We don't want to leave anybody out. Everybody needs to be a part of the process. This process, and something that we probably need to look at going forward, is flawed because under this scenario, on any election, somebody could say that, "I'm going to run," go up to the date when ballots are going to get mailed out, and say, "I'm not going to run anymore." Now, we know that's not going to happen, but it could happen. Is it really fair to Councilwoman Flores and myself and to Ms. Graham that these people who will not be reached and will not know that Mr. Nava is not running, and they vote for Mr. Nava, they would have voted for one or two of the other three? Now, they have no vote, and so what we've essentially done is eliminated their voice in government, and there has to be some kind of remedy for that, other than just saying, "You know what? We're going to post a note here, or we're going to do this." I was talking to a guy yesterday, and he says, "Why can't we just put an insert in every ballot that says that Mr. Nava's withdrawn? He's not a candidate anymore." You know, we didn't have that time because we have one day. Who's going to stuff 70,000 ballots in California to put that in there? So, to me, that was the concern. This truly is not about Mr. Nava. This is about our system and how we disenfranchise voters with a system that, I guess it's the best system in the world, but it's moments like this that make you think that this is not good. Because whatever the results are, if you have... I look back, the last time I ran for at-large, there were 8,000 undervotes on that ballot because obviously, some people don't read the directions and then they vote for one when they can vote for two, or they just wanted to vote for one. It will be very interesting to see what the undervotes are in this election, but whatever those undervotes are, could have absolutely swung the election in one person's... And even the person who comes in third, they could essentially have been second or first, have these people been, have they known? And it's just discouraging. It's discouraging, and when Councilwoman Horace talks about, you know, perception is everything. Perception is everything. Dropping out of a race, no matter who it is, the day before the ballots are to be mailed, it just doesn't feel right. It just doesn't feel good. It feels like something's very wrong, whether it is or isn't. I'm just telling you about what somebody's perception is of that. So, I mean, I think that's what the gist of the meeting is, is that we're truly disenfranch... And I love how you said that, disenfranchising Pueblo's for having a voice in this election. Councilwoman Schimmel?
Thank you. We could disagree with you, and we didn't do anything. Dwayne Nava made the decision not to run. He made the decision on the time he would make that announcement not to run. We had nothing to do with it. And as far as us being able to do or both being able to do with this, because they said it does happen, I think it happened when I got on in '15. I don't think she bailed out until very end, or it was too late, and I was paying for all the money for her election, so it's happened before. It happened. The only way you're going to change it is go to the state. We're going to sit around here and bitch all night long, but the fact is, you're going to have to go to the state to do anything. Mr. Ortiz has nodded our head, and I would imagine the attorney is too. Okay, so you all can be here tonight, but we can't do anything about it. It's the way it is, and you may not like it, but Mr....
It happened two times. Wow.
Can you guys be polite? Thank you. I think Dwayne made his own decision, and I think if he wants to be mad, then that is him, because he didn't decide earlier. And as far as... I'm wondering if originally it was suggested by you, Laurie, if there was cohesion or misconduct illegal activity going on between Nick and the chamber and Mr. from Dwayne. I didn't understand that part. I don't want to go into it, but I don't know if you stand... These are people of some kind of criminal activity, or I know you have an agenda in this also, so maybe we got to balance it, but I think the big deal is, guys, we can't do anything about it. You have to go to the state, and that's the way it is. You're real mean, so you're a mean, you're wrong, and it's a fact. I mean, I'm short with red hair. It's a fact. I can bitch about it. I think it's not right, but it's a fact. So, that's your answer. All you people need to get a hold of all our state legislators and complain to them about it. But you know what? When somebody dies, they die the day before the election. What are you going to do?
But it's not definite.
Anyway, you all got there those days, I'm sure, and I think you need to pass more, but places much higher than this places. Thank you.
Much, Father.
Councilwoman Flores?
As I understand, somebody made the comment that the chamber's not involved in this. Why were they asked to be here?
They weren't.
So, they're here. I don't think Mr. Nava knew on Wednesday that he was going to be selected for the day that they interviewed all four candidates. By the way, it's four candidates, not three. And why would the chamber have any kind of ill intent? They just picked the date, as I understand, because they wanted to get to the chili festival, and so they picked a date. I don't, you know, so that was their date. It was not Nava's date. And so, I'm just wondering what, why we're here, number one, and number two, why we're telling this independent, autonomous, nonprofit agency, and why we have them here? We're not talking about them. I'm just a little frustrated about this because I don't see anything wrong with this. I understand there's nothing mysterious. There's no conspiracy here, and it's just not... I've learned nothing from this meeting, and I'm very, very frustrated that we're even here.
Well, I'm so sorry, Dennis, that you feel that way, but as I said when I started, my comments that we're here to shed light on the situation, and that's all. That's all. This doesn't look good. It doesn't smell good. I don't think it's all coincidence, and I don't think a lot of people do either.
Councilwoman Tensier?
Yeah, you have all the rights, every single one of us has the right to call a special meeting anytime for any reason. And the thing is, though, Laurie, that you think it was a strategy, and you believe that there was a strategy, there's no proof. Bring the proof that something mysterious was going on, that it actually happened, and then we can deal with it. Otherwise, like Mr. Flores said, there's no reason for us to be here because we can't prove anything. Prove it, I'll drop by my side in a second. Not a problem, because I don't want any illegality going on anywhere in city government or any place else, as far as I'm concerned. But there's nothing we can do, but Mr. Schimmel said it. It's done, and it happens all the time. So, as far as that's, we've got it.
Yeah, I didn't expect anything to change tonight again. This is just merely shining a light and talking about it.
Now, hold on a minute. Can we speak on behalf of the chamber to provide some clarification?
Actually, I'm the chairman, so I wouldn't ask that. All right, Mr. Lawrence? Yeah, give me just a second. I'll recognize you for sure. Once again, and I just want to make sure that everybody on city council is clear on this, is from my perspective, this has nothing to do with Mr. Nava or the Chamber of Commerce. What this has to do with is the disenfranchisement of voters. That's all this is about. Now, if the community wants to know how the reason Mr. Ortiz is here, the reason the city attorney is here, to answer the question so the public who's interested in how this process works can get the information on how this all came about and why we're where we're at today. Mr. Ortiz has done a wonderful job of explaining that. Mr. Kudosek has had a wonderful way of explaining that, so people understand how it could not be changed. Mr. Nava cannot come off of the ballot. There's no way under state law, city law, any law that that can happen. So, it is what it is. My point when I made my statement was, is that if that's the way it is, then something needs to change in the way that we do it, because we're disenfranchising voters in this specific instance. So, we're not going to change it for this election. It's not going to happen. Nothing's going to change. Mr. Nava's going to be on the ballot. We're going to... People are going to vote, and the two top vote contenders are going to be on city council. That's the way that it's going to be. But moving forward as a body and as a city, with the city attorney, with the help of Mr. Ortiz and Ms. Mitchell, we ought to figure out if there's a better way or some way that we could do this to make it better, and as a group, approach the state and say, "This is how we believe we can fix it here in Pueblo, Colorado." And I guess that's what I hope to get out of this meeting and to move forward. If we as councillors think that it's okay to disenfranchise voters and to allow their votes not to count, then we have a problem. We have a bigger problem than this... We have a bigger problem than this, where they just hit the gavel, let's go home. We shouldn't talk about that. We should talk about that. Maybe this was, we need to carry this on to another meeting at another time. But it's something that definitely should be addressed as we move forward. And it should be clear to candidates that there's a deadline to withdrawal. Should you not meet that deadline, you're not withdrawing. I don't know that that's the answer. I'm just saying that that's something we need to talk about.
You can't make somebody run if they don't want to run.
Well, somebody does before the election, I guess we could find that. As I was going to say, I...
Now, you're just making light of the disenfranchisement of voters.
It's going to happen. I'm not making it up.
Yes, you are.
I'm just saying it's going to happen.
I promised the Chamber that you could come up and say your piece, and we'll be done with this meeting. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. Hello, who are you?
That's right.
Yeah. You're doing the training.
Yeah. Hello, my name is Louis Nazario. I'm the Chamber Chairman, Pablo Chamber Chairman. So, I wanted to talk about the situation. I think it's completely misunderstood. I mean, you're sitting here making a lot of accusations against the Chamber, but I just want to walk you through the timeline, because in no way, shape, or form, and really want to back, want to pursue the Chamber of doing something that we didn't do by the way. So, when brought past the way, we decided that there was talk about naming somebody from within. We decided as a board, Executive Committee, that we owed it to Pablo and the Chamber, since it's such a position of interest, that we needed to do a national search. So, the board did a national search. We hired a third-party consultant to go through and provide us... We provided a job description, salary, anything that you typically do. They did a national search. We had over thirty applicants, and ten of them actually met the job description based on the professionals, met the job description of that. At this point, we established a selection committee that was not Chamber Board members. There were some Chamber Board members. There was a community people that were part of the selection committee. We had applications, and the applications went out there during the on-main list. At that point, we had ten applicants that our selection committee screened. We screened them through a first interview process on August fourth. At that point, we were... Our goal and our responsibility and our report back to the Chamber Board was to provide them with three candidates that the Chamber's Board would interview, and we would make the decision to go. We had the first interview, like I said, August fourth. At that point, there was a third-place tie, so we decided to bring four interviewers to the board. We notified the applicants on nine fifteen of the second interview. But at that point, in the September meeting, we decided that the staff is so burdened with the Chili Fest, we were going to wait till after the Colorado State Fair and after the Chili Fest to even conduct interviews. And I wanted to do it the first two weeks of October, because I needed to ratify it on our next meeting in November... I'm sorry, October twenty. At that point, we getting fourteen, fifteen, sixteen Board members together. They just sent out a poll. That debate worked out on the sixth. We had four interviewees, interviewees come in. We started by alphabetical order, and it was a grading sheet, and we did everything by the book. At the end, we decided that interviews went from eight to eleven, from eleven to twelve. We discussed it, and we came across Dwayne as being the best candidate. So, at no point was Dwayne going assured of position by any means at all. It was all about, I believe, some of us... We, as a Chamber, got a lot of criticism, because it took so long. But I didn't care if it took two years. I wanted to find the right person for the right job. And so, yes, it took longer than it should have, and probably... But we had a strong inter-president. We had an organization that was running very well. We didn't... We felt that it didn't have to be there specifically. We felt that we needed to do everything in our power to find the best candidate. And it turned out that our board made up of sixteen people, and fourteen of them voted for Dwayne. We didn't... There was nothing that we did that proved any ill do. And I don't understand. It's just a victim of circumstances in type. That'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. What's the...
Thank you. Questions? Comments? Councilor Mina?
I just want to congratulate Laurie.
And Eric, good job. Thank you. We feel a good team.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else have anything? Councilor Schiller?
Just a question. What positives came out of this?
I think what was positive is that some community members came into council chambers. We addressed an issue that they had, and they got their answers to what went on, how it happened, and it's transparent government at its best. Are you aware of that?
I'm very...
Any other questions? Comments?